Mike, would you be kind enough to say what you're going to do next?
I'd like for the students to sit in the back in the United States of America. And to be aware that we're just saying for knowledge under God and this world with open justice as well.
Join me, we have a work called "Peace."
Douglas Beatty, Andrew Brockway, Kathy Buckley, Michael Haggardorn, Holden Lehman, Ed Maron, Mark Sam, Pauline Stone, Cameron Kuchar.
It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. May I have a motion please?
Motion.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to separate 8C on page 12. We have a standalone item on the agenda.
It is 5 of 13. There is a motion on the floor to amend the agenda removing 8C and turning it to a standalone item. It's on page 5 of 13. Do we have a second? Alright, second goes by Ed. Any questions or discussion concerning this?
They're going to say why, I just, I, um...
Just to, just to know, standalone, we can have a discussion.
Oh, okay.
One thing I would like to know, Mr. Gerhardt, are there any limitations on what we are allowed to talk about concerning 5C? Page 5 of 13. I'm sorry, 8C.
I think to the extent that this appointment was brought forward in pending litigation, I would advise the board not to be discussing pending litigation in public session.
Is, was that the motivation for...
Wasn't the motivation, I wanted, because as I discussed before on a consent agenda, to remove an item if I planned on voting differently than the rest of it. And I sent you one to that effect. I wanted to vote differently on that specific item than the rest of them. So that's why I wanted to write this, so my vote can be recorded in front of them.
Alright, so we are secure within that? Alright, so, the motion to remove...
Put it in, first a second, then, now we need to...
Yep, and we give our discussion. So, can you give an all in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstains?
I abst...
Okay. Alright, so the motion moves. Do we approve the rest of the agenda?
As amended.
As amended, okay.
Just for clarity, there were five yeses and one objection.
Alright. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to this Board of Education to approve this amended agenda. May I have a motion please?
Motion.
So who gets it, Mike or Mark? Oh, Ed and Mark, sorry. That goes to Ed. Second goes to Mark. Alright. Alright, and before we proceed, we actually need to have an unexempt... Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we... huh?
I'm sorry, I thought you guessed that.
I think we did.
No, we did to amend.
To amend, you're right, 100% correct. 100% correct. Okay, is there any additional discussion? All in favor? Noes? Abstains? Now we have a, I mean, how do we want to word that, executive session?
I don't have the standard language for me, but our board clerk, I'm sure our attorney knows, but we do need to go into executive session to discuss the particular employment, the employment of a particular person or persons. And were there plans to have other discussions at this time?
Do we want to also discuss the pending litigation?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, the litigation, Brockway versus Board of Education. Speaking of being down school district at all, I guess I should say.
We could start from... We save along that executive session, please.
Or you want to do presentations and then do it, or...
Yeah, let's do that.
If you want to, you know, get there here, do the presentation.
Okay, so do presentations. Okay, let's do presentations and then executive session. Alright, excellent. Sorry about the confusion today, guys. Alright, presentations. Alright, starting with presentations. We'd like to introduce Mary Swanson. She will be presenting on the 2017-2018 student achievement data. Thank you very much.
So I'd like to give you a general overview of the assessment data for the pre-fee assessments and also for the Regents assessments. This slide, I guess it's not so much important to read all of it, but just to recognize that there's a long list there. And what this lists out are some of the major changes that State Ed has made in the testing over the past few years. They've listened to feedback across the state and have responded to that feedback by changing the test in some ways. Significantly, two years ago, they allowed tests to be read as an allowable accommodation on the state assessments. Prior to that, that was not allowed. And they've done some other things to change the tests as well. This past year, they changed the test from three days down to two days. Three days allowed a lot of assessments for both ELA and math. Six total these are tested, so they brought it down to two. Because of that, they also made some other changes, including changing what's called the scaled score of the test. So the scaled score is a score, if you will, that each student gets. The score, the scale used to go up to 400, plus or minus. Now it goes up to over 600. So because of that, and because of some of the other changes that have been made, this year is what's considered a baseline year for data. Meaning that the state has said, we're going to look at last year's data, but we can't compare it to previous year's data. So what we see here are the levels of threes and fours for the ELA assessments, grades three through eight. And threes and fours are what is considered proficient on the test. So the green is showing this past year. And again, the state has said, we can't compare from year to year, but the comparisons are here, just for your reference. So obviously, what we're looking for is that year to year, our students are doing better. We can see grade six and grade eight kind of are standouts there for the past year. And looking across, we see a general trend upward, which is what we like to see. This is the same information, but looking at the math assessments for grades three through eight. Again, the green is last year, and the numbers are giving the percentage of proficiency. Something to note or that stands out is in grade eight. We can see this past year was 11% proficient. The previous year, you don't see a yellow column. And that is because that year was the first year that our eighth grade students did not take the eighth grade, uh, go back. The students who are eligible to take the Regents did not take the eighth grade assessment as well. And so the students who would generally tend to get the threes and fours didn't take the assessment, which is why you don't see any proficient there for 2017.
Good question. Do you, so the first four years on there are within standard deviation. Because that's, you're going from zero to, you are starting at zero, are you? So the graph starts at zero. So it's relatively level. The last two, seven and eight, is that drop? Because do you attribute that most to what? Is it to change in the test, or what do you see the drop?
From the grade seven assessment to the grade eight.
Yeah, from six to seven and eight are lower, or seven.
Then the threes, fours and fives. I mean, there are, there could be many things that we take into account. It's the test, it's the changes in the test, it's the cohort in general. Sometimes we see a class come through where students are just generally stronger. That sixth grade that you see with the 46%, that's an example. If you look at the fifth grade in the yellow, that's showing...
I just want to point something out. Are you saying why is it dropped from sixth grade to seventh grade? Because I think, help me out.
The seventh and eighth are much dramatically lower than the other ones.
So when you compare, you've got, so seventh grade, you take, let's take this group right here. This was then in sixth grade. So they improved in seventh grade. So this group right here, the sixth grade, they improved in seventh grade. And this group right here, the sixth grade, they improved in seventh grade. So seventh grade is showing improvement relative to sixth grade. I want to point that out. So then in eighth grade, you may be asking, why is it, why this group decreased this group? This group goes here, and then this group goes here. And you already talked about why there's a difference there. Because we have accelerated kids taking the Regents exam in eighth grade. And therefore, it's, last year and this year, those kids didn't take it. Because we don't feel like overtesting our kids. We decided that having our kids spend all the time testing is not like spending all the time learning. I hope that ends your question. Sorry.
So looking at the Regents data, this is showing the pass rate and the mastery rate for each of the Regents. Looking back across the years, and our students do well with the Regents. And what we're looking for is to see that we are, that we are either maintaining or we are raising the percentage of students who are passing the Regents or who are reaching mastery. So I'll just flip through these, and you'll be able to see that, oops. Global has changed, so last year was the first year that there was what was called the transition Regents exam. And this is showing the pass rate and the mastery rate, which, you know, that's excellent results on that assessment.
What do they mean by a transition?
The global was...
I can explain it, yeah. So a transition exam was it moved from a different type of test into a new format. So there's more writing involved in this one, this transition test. So basically, it's in between the new global test is coming out that we have to take next year. Everybody in the state that started taking that exam. And it's kind of that tweener in between. So it's got some of the aspects of the previous test and the new test to kind of, you know, roll into that new test. So it doesn't see such a discrepancy, you know. Because if you look at the geometry test, that was a changed test. So you can see, you know, sometimes that does make a big difference if we just change it to a test. So this was a transition factor where they'd walk in and they had different aspects from each test to kind of roll into the next year. So next year, we have to take that, the other global test.
What kind of modifications do you have for special, for like 504 and IEP for, if you have more written?
So they have in their IEPs, their written IEP, whatever their IEP asks for. That's what we need to give them on, I think, on that state exam.
Okay. Alright, excellent, thank you.
Follow up on that. So the transition having more written component to it now? How do they mitigate an advantage that the students with a better ELA capacity would have? Because, let's say you did well on the global, because it wasn't as much writing, but conceptual, you understand the global much better. But now, if I have a deficiency in ELA, and I go take it the next year, I may not be able to show my knowledge base. So how do they adjust for that?
And that's going to be, that's going to be the tough transition test. One of the big aspects of the new exam is they call enduring issues. So what the students are going to have to write about is these different issues that come up, and they're going to prompt them, they have to write about it. So it is alignment a lot more to an ELA exam, which is definitely going to be that factor of working towards, you know, that literacy background, building vocabulary and comprehension. And it's, that's why they do the transition, try to get students assimilated to those type of lessons.
Let's build on that, Matt. When you see the school districts around the country that have showed the most improvement, essentially dramatic improvement in their scores, they have a school-wide K through 12 focused on reading. And when you, when you teach everybody to read better, their math scores improve, their social studies scores improve. And you see that across, there's a lot of people like, well, how come we're not giving a lot of support for math? You are by teaching them how to read. Because there's so much to it, it's just getting through the vocabulary and just the number of words per minute. Up you get through the test, and you achieve at higher levels. Again, if you just have a total school-wide focus on literacy.
It's really building that capacity around the content, I could have a question.
So building on what Ed said, are there any classes or programs available for people that are weaker in ELA to get up to speed?
Oh, absolutely.
Their test will be, or their ability to take the test will be on par with the cohort?
Absolutely, we have support classes, we have AIS classes, and we just put them in to give them that support. So when we get the grades back, especially for the transition exam, those students that are sitting at that level one and two, they're placed in AIS, global AIS, ELA class. They get support every single day, intermediation. So we have those responsive interventions in there, in place.
I'm sorry, man.
In these last few slides show attendance. So we can see across the years, that's one of the things that we've been tracking and trying to see what we can do to get our students here each and every day. Another thing we track is discipline. And you can see that referrals have gone down over the past few years. And you'll notice that 2014-15 was higher than the other ones. And, you know, the structure and the way that things were done was different then. And so I think some changes were made in 15-16. And we can see that we've had less referrals in 15.
Man, what kind of changes were made from 14-15-15-16 that would result in lower discipline rates?
I think it was the way, the way that we looked at things. I think there were some changes in administration, there were some changes in just, you know, the overall structures, I don't know.
Yeah, I think you've provided more support for those students that are struggling. So we have, you know, our VHSN on campus now, we have counseling, we have the psychologists on campus, we have positive E R support systems in place to help students, you know, deal with these aspects. We have counselors going to classrooms and deal with students' behavioral and mental capacity. So there's a lot of things that are in place that we've done in the last couple of years to make sure these students are mentally, their capacity is, you know, socially and emotionally is there too. And that's a big aspect right now.
There's also, just to chime in, ELT, you had a lot to do with that, I think, too. Just really creating that structure where we had those, you know, the first year we did, we had some after-school programs, you know, high school level. The elementary has the BAS programs. Just really bringing, connecting teachers to kids and developing those relationships. I think helps teachers manage kids in the classroom better, increase those relationships. And then we see a decrease in the disciplinary issues that we have.
And Mike, that was one of the theories we wrote into the grant. And that was the mindset change that, you know, administrators that are around for a while have seen that change from 14-15. And just our approach and building those relationships has been exceptionally valuable in keeping our kids. Our goal was to have our kids in school more often and not being in trouble. And we thought that then they would achieve at higher levels.
And they achieve at higher levels is the next slide, which is graduation rate, which has been another topic. And we can see that it's steadily gone up. And from 16-17 to 17-18, there was not significant difference. When you're looking at our number of graduates, just one or two students can change those percentages.
Did we have, sorry, did we have the ACT scores?
I do have them. I did not put them in the slide, but I can do that and then share it. All of this, all of those went up as well. And the composite, the composite score, the overall score stayed the same, but in each of the different areas, they went up.
You know, we'll just put that into, we'll put that into the portal for the people to see. But it was just another really good indicator of the hard work that people are doing.
Do you have both S A T and the institution?
No, we don't get an S A T report. I've never gotten, I never received an S A T. I always receive an ACT report.
Because I know it's in counselors' students' information, so...
The counselors may have it. We could look for it.
Just a general question. Since you mentioned that the testing went from three days to two days, was that for all grades?
Yes.
I imagine that the impact, really, how was the impact with the third graders?
Can I jump in on that? Because there's an important point here. So it is wonderful to think that they went from, the state took a whole day testing off. It's wonderful to think. But they had the same number of questions in the exam. So from a third grader, it's nice, it's only two days. But like a fifth grader, a sixth grader, there were fifth graders and sixth graders that knew, you just crammed this massive three-day test onto me in two days. There were people that, kids that said that to the administrators. So it has gone from three to two, that is nice. But we think they shouldn't be condensing the number of questions as well. But there's other feedback, I wanted to share that, go ahead.
Okay, so, is that a question? So how did the, how was the impact of going from three to two days? So Mr. Manis was talking about similar questions. Were the questions the same rigor? Or were they changed so that you could compensate for the two days versus the three days?
I'll refer, I'll go to the experts that sit in there and see the kids, but I know that they were having a hard time having kids. They also, you have extended time, there's no time limit now anymore. And kids, so it's great, there's no time limit now. Kids were taking a long time to take, it's very, it's, I mean, you guys know. And when I heard from other school districts, and in one of the committees on state level, they're talking about trucking in pizza to give these kids, because they're still taking the exam. So it doesn't sound like a really great model, it's something to build on. But, you know, go ahead and, how did our kids, what were some of the success stories? Obviously, the data's kind of a success story. But what was the, what was the feedback that you guys saw, you know, in our always?
And I'll let the former difference will speak to it as well. But, you know, something that I noticed is, across the years with a three-day test, the first day, the kids are all in, the second day, you know, they're working. And by the third day, it's, you know, they've, they've had enough. And so the results that you see on that third day might not necessarily be what you would see if they took it in two days instead. So that, that's one big difference. Not having the test timed anymore, I think, let stress off of a certain population of students. But I think also added some stress to those students who are going to work all day. And they're, you know, until they're finished, and they're finished to what they think is, or, you know, perfection for some students. So those are some differences, and I don't know, Sarah, what you noticed?
Yeah, I would say along that same line. And we had some kids, you know, we start around 9:45 in the morning. And some kids, you know, with the process where we have to give them, you know, a structured lunch to get them through the test, and then they come back out after lunch. And it makes for a long day for these eight-year-olds, nine-year-olds and 10-year-olds to be sitting down trying to, you know, do their best. And certainly, you know, not the ideal situation is trying to, you know, assess where their learning is at.
I had three students with disabilities take the test in my office last year. I have one had, and it was a real struggle for them. One, it was too difficult, broke down crying a couple times, came back. Another one was just so diligent, had that work ethic, was determined to get through for hours out there. And took at least an hour to write one sentence. So that score's obviously not going to reflect that kid's work ethic. But they struggled a lot with just that certain population.
And at the lower grades, you guys use a STAR Web, right? To have more frequent evaluation. How, in your opinion, how does this, how do these results compare to the STAR Web evaluations that you get on a continuous basis? When you look at both sets of grades, if you will, on the same student? Is there really confident equal correlation, or does it vary a lot?
I would say that in general, it correlates. I'm not sure I would use the word like confident correlation, but in general, you do see those trends that students who score lower on the STAR tend to get the ones and twos, and those who score higher get the threes and fours.
What's nice though is that when the kids are taking the STAR test, it'll give us a report that breaks down the skills that they're weakened so that teachers can get that immediate feedback and start working on those skills to boost their overall performance. Whereas with the state, you take it, you see how your kids have done, you can look at some of the sample questions and the exemplars and kind of get a feel for it. But truly, I think that our local assessments really give us a lot better information.
Are there any more questions? Thank you very much.
Do you want to go to my presentations? Do you want to go through mine and Cameron's presentations?
Oh, yeah, I'll do reports. Alright, moving on to reports. Starting with, sorry, the superintendent of schools, Dan Minnick.
Sure. I'm going to cede my time in two directions, and I'll give a couple other quick updates. But one of the components we always start out our budget season with is, what are we seeing from special education? And I know that our assistant superintendent has done some really nice analysis. And she's going to just share what she has.
Just a quick update on special education enrollment data. This year, we have 321 students with disabilities compared to 306 last year. We have 38 preschool students compared to 29 last year. And our Section 504 plan students decreased from 129 to 122. But those numbers are always fluctuating, of course, that's just a point in time. For example, in the last three weeks, we've had seven students with disabilities transfer into Bigman Town and nobody's left. So it's continually changing. We've had a lot of transfers this year alone. As far as our most recent state education department data, it shows a lot of improvements in special education. Our graduation rate went up from 52% to 69% for students with disabilities. Our dropout rate went down from 32% to 15%, that was big. The number of students we have in the general education setting the majority of the day increased. We also met or exceeded state targets for high school ELA and math performance. Our suspension rate, our students served in separate schools. Right now, we have eight students at CBES. And also our parent involvement. So we had over 98% of parents report that the school had facilitated their engagement and involvement in improving services for their students. So those were all positive and strengths for the district. Of course, we want to continue to improve, and the goals we're continuing to work on. We want to decrease classification rate, we're always looking at that. And also the dropout rate, we always continually look at that population in high school. And then increasing our time in this restrictive environment for students with disabilities, both school age and preschool students, that's an area we want to continue to improve on.
It's hard to decrease the classification rate when you're having sevens and eights.
Everyone's coming in.
Everyone's coming in, yeah. Already classified.
Right.
So how's our building capacity with this growth?
Pardon?
Are we okay building-wise with the growth?
We are full. And we have a variance from two rooms at the middle school. But we are serving everyone right now, yes.
Can you explain the difference between why our, our graduation rate and our dropout rate? What is happening to those people that aren't graduating or dropping out? Because obviously, those numbers don't add up to 100%.
Yeah, those numbers, again, they're not huge populations. A couple of kids make a big difference. But so while we're improving at, we have students in our, for example, our 51 parallel curriculum, we're really getting those struggling students that struggle with content through those programs and through those Regents exams, and they're getting that diploma. So that graduation rate is increasing. But at the same time, we have groups of students that, you know, we're trying to engage in that path that we've lost. And sometimes we can get them back and other times we don't. But it's an ongoing process. And we worked on a quality improvement plan last school year to target that dropout rate because it was so high at one point. And put a lot of different things in place to try and increase the engagement of that specific population. And so often, it's the students that aren't necessarily just struggling academically, but also having emotional behavioral issues as well.
I guess I wasn't clear on that. You said last year, the graduation rate was 69% and dropout rate declined 15%? Or was it 13%?
It declined, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I misunderstood.
Yeah.
That makes sense, thank you. Thank you.
So another piece for budget preparation is, you've probably been watching some of the New York State political fallout from the election in November. But for the first time in a long time, the Democrats have controlled the Senate and the Assembly. So there's some potential that that is going to benefit unions or schools. You know, we have our fingers crossed. There's another discussion point that's been going around the state legislature for a long time. And that is, would the legislature fully fund foundation aid? The foundation aid is that aid that's built on the number of kids that come in. Right now, there's some formula, political formula, that doesn't correlate to really much anything. I can't, I wouldn't tell you that anybody could figure it out and explain why it makes sense. Foundation aid formula does make sense. And it looks like we're underfunded in the foundation. We're one of the few schools in this area that are underfunded in foundation aid. And it looks like to the tune of $700,000 to $800,000. So if that ever, they ever decided to fully fund the foundation aid formula, that could certainly help us. Another big budget driver you're going to see is our health insurance. It's going to probably increase 10% to 11% this year, which is already a huge number. If you remember, last year it increased 26%. So if there was ever a time to level up on foundation aid, that could certainly help us. We, last year, I'd say we were really gloom and doom because this isn't an election year. There's nobody running for election, so there's no real, ever real need on those non-election years to kind of, you know, secure votes or whatever it is that politicians do with money. But it does look like the economy has ticked up. The stock brokers in New York City that get the big bonuses that drive a lot of our economy and the tax rolls, their bonuses were rich, and that money comes into the coffers. So there's a lot of good things that are in play. Optimistic, I guess, we're optimistic. But again, there's no, there's nothing that tells us, hey, these folks are running and they've got, they're going to try to deliver. But all that being said, we have our fingers crossed. We hope it's going to be better than we thought it would be last year. But we'll know more January. The governor's giving his state-of-the-state and budget address combined. And we obviously watch that and keep a close eye on that. One other item before I hand it over to Mike, I'm going to cede Mike some time as a community member who wanted a little bit more information on our CAP project. Mike drives our operations committee. Is our school calendar this year? We had a snow, we've had two snow days before, I think, before Thanksgiving, right? Certainly before Christmas. Or one, one snow day for one group and two snow days for another group. Luckily, this year, we booked five snow days. So we may, if we have any issue, we may have to take the last day off of April break, which is a Monday, and utilize that as a school day. And we also, one of the snow days was on a professional development day. And we can't give up those professional development days because we really only have, we have two that are very standard, and you don't get a lot of development. It's a lot more of it's just entering school and getting ready and doing a lot of mandated training. So on this PD day, which looks like it's going to be January 18th, we will, we'll have to send a note home to parents and saying, sorry, this day is a professional development day, and you're going to have to find daycare. And we're going to just, because we receive four of those a year, we have to use it. I think that's, that's it for me. But I wanted to give Mike some time, he sat in on the capital project update.
Yeah, so December 5th, I was part of an update. We had two members from Tetra Tech, our new construction manager, UW Marks, attending my teleconference. And, you know, our board, or our district memberships, such as Dan Mannix and Mr. Scott, Dan Newton. And so we wanted to get an update on, you know, how things are going there. And Phase 1, such as the parking lot, is obviously complete. But in the spring, they do intend to do a little bit more landscaping when everything thaws. And then that will be officially complete. Phase 2 was, part of it was the tank of the bus garage, which is also done. And they also gave us a little update on the Capital Outlet project, which involved the windows at Cumberland Head, which is also just wrapping up. But really, the bulk of the meeting was discussion, discussing Phase 3, which is all the items that came overbid from the first time around. And so we started with reviewing, you know, all the items. And it was kind of a lengthy discussion about, you know, keeping all the main pillars that we had presented a long time ago. And all those main pillars are remaining. And there was a little discussion about each and how, for example, the LGI, the large group construction room, was still projected to be fairly expensive. And so they did some creative, you know, re-engineering Tetra Tech and our construction manager to change some things. So it would take a lot, a lot less money off of that expense to keep it in the project. And then we reviewed the schedule, which I'm really glad the report is, is looking good, and we're looking on schedule. Tetra Tech and UW Marks were noting that yesterday, they were predicting to get together and have final estimates on the expenses of the scope of our project. And then come January, they were going to meet with us and the district representatives and present to us again about their final estimates and recommendations on scope. And so we're on target to get bids or advertiser bids in mid-January. And then really, they would require walkthroughs, the various companies that are going to present or make bids to us. And we're, you know, what happened last time is we were so late is all the construction companies already had a lot of work lined up, so the bids came in very high. And getting it out there early is going to help us tremendously. And so I have February 13th as a date that starred as opening the bid process. And we hope to be able to recommend or award bids by the end of February. So that's really important and right on schedule. We also discussed, you know, that Sheehan, who did the park lot, is going to start early May or mid-May on the fields. And they did a lot of prep work up until it became impossible with the change in the weather. And we also talked about having the lighting for that field being budgeted into the scope of this capital project. So there was some talk of having boosters, but then we realized that could cost quite a bit of money, that would be difficult for the boosters to raise. So everything's looking good as far as the capital project.
Moving on to audit committee. Oh, we jumped right over here. I am so sorry, Cameron.
I'll go now, I guess. There's some stuff that was carried over from last month, too, due to that not being presented last month. At Cumberland Head Elementary School, you have fourth and fifth grader students who went to SUNY Plattsburgh to enjoy a concert put on by the college students. They had a mega concert at the school, which was a huge success. I believe that was the Bigman Town Elementary and Cumberland Head joined here. Cumberland Head is fortunate enough to have Love on a Leash visit often to share their therapy dogs with their students. There's a fluffy Chow that snorts when it breathes, and it's a crowd favorite. The Culture Club is a committee devoted to planning activities to unify the building, has given staff secret buddies through, through the year. The secret buddy gives their person a little treat or nice message in their mailbox every so often. Each grade level is also provided dinner once a month, is providing dinner once a month to our custodians to say thank you. A cookie exchange is up for this month for Christmas. Several teachers have attended Hope Changes Everything in Lake Placid. These teachers learn strategies to use for students experiencing trauma and mental health issues. Those teachers will be presenting at the December faculty meeting, bringing back what they learned to other staff members. The Emotional Wellness Team continues to support teachers with ideas, strategies, and behavior plans for students who have experienced trauma. Staff remain committed to further the knowledge in this area. Kindergarten is hosting a family gingerbread making event. First grade will also invite families to create ornaments with their children. The Polar Express is being performed by third grader, third grade students for the entire school as well as families. The third grade Positive Bus Committee is ringing the Salvation Army bell tonight at Target under the direction of Mrs. Holzer and Mrs. Beatty. Second grade will be singing carols at Lake Forest Nursing Home, and then again for families at CHES. Teachers are planning their own holiday cookie exchange and gift-giving auction for their own holiday fund. And then Eagle Pride Pals will start in the new year. This is a peer mentoring program intended to build connections and community, providing mentees that support as well as give mentors leadership opportunities. We are excited to see the impact this has on our students, our elementary school here at Bigman Town. They had a successful parent-teacher conferences last week. Mrs. Paquette is in the process of compiling numbers and data in relation to the turnout. The fourth graders attended the field trip, same as Cumberland Head, to SUNY Plattsburgh to watch the kids' concierto. The third graders will be attending Pete and the Cat at Flynn Theater in Burlington, Vermont, today. The school collectively brought in over 800 non-perishable food items to benefit the Bigman Town Hall of Food Drive. This effort was organized by the Student Council. Singing Santa will be coming next week. These kids are always excited for his visit. And select fifth graders will be caroling at local nursing homes this, next week. And then, just like Cumberland Head, they'll be decorating holiday ornaments as well as buddy groups next week at the middle school. The first Eagle Pride assembly was a success. The principal cabinet, consisting of eighth graders from all teams, met this last month to discuss Eagle Pride, the Eagle Pride Assembly. Seventh and eighth grader student, eighth grade students attended a presentation done by the North Country Honor Flight. For early release day, November 29th, they followed a block schedule where groups rotated to three stations, a counseling presentation on the importance of having a positive attitude by Mr. Johnson and Mr. King. A teamwork activity in the gym facilitated by Mrs. Heilman and Mr. Fish. And then a goal-setting activity facilitated by Mrs. Nelson herself. Today, we had a mix-it-up day in the middle school cafeteria in an effort to foster a positive school culture and inclusion. The lunch period seatings were mixed up. Mrs. Kelly, Mr. King, Mrs. Nelson, and the National Honor Society students played, planned this day. There was a photo booth, game tables, and conversation cards at each table. The high school students were acting as table facilitators. Parent-teacher conferences went smoothly in the middle school, and they were well-attended. Teachers were able to meet with parents in groups. There have been two parent advisory committee meetings. Seven parents were in attendance at last night's meeting, and they identified positive aspects of the middle school and areas for growth, as well as feedback on parent-teacher conferences. The Winter Wonderland Week is next week, and there will be winter-themed days. On the 20th, the middle school has a field trip to the Strand. And the students will be watching a performance of Elf Jr. by the Drama Club and view the film Wonder. The Spelling Bee will be December 13th in the morning, that's this week. And a happy note for school portraits, the middle school signed a multi-year agreement with Lifetouch in November, and it was negotiated that instead of the traditional incentives for portraits, the middle school will now receive 25 complimentary portrait packages that will be distributed to families who are unable to purchase portraits. Those 25 will be distributed for the next couple of years. Some families will receive portrait vouchers this year. Over in the high school, students have attended quite a few college visits to Paul Smith's, Clarkson, Potstam, St. Lawrence, Canton, and North Country College. This helps create an added awareness of college readiness and experiences for those who plan on attending college after they graduate. The hosting of Temple Grandin back in October gave the high school an immense opportunity for 500 students, parents, teachers, and community members to see the wonderful agriculture, technology, and CSM programs. It was quite an honor to have Mrs. Temple here herself. The district hosted a suicide prevention summit for neighboring district administrators to discuss ways of being proactive in suicide prevention techniques. Teachers have attended several professional development opportunities. And Mr. Bazio has met with each teacher returning from their professional development to discuss how we can embed what they learned throughout the whole what they learned throughout the whole school. Teachers will be presenting what they learned at the upcoming faculty meeting, which they had today in the high school, and department meetings. Our students with soccer, athletes with soccer, volleyball, football, and cross-country have all seen great success in the past fall season when they attended sectionals, and they have positively represented our campus on the athletic aspect of it. And then just from a high school perspective, we're bringing back the Environmental Club. I don't know if this was brought up at the last meeting, but this is great to prove how much we care about the community, and we will not, we'll try not to make the board's job too difficult. In this club, we plan on making recycling efforts around our school more intense. And we'll hopefully present more upcoming meetings throughout the year. We just presented today, actually, for one of the meetings, or for the faculty meeting. We also hope to make our school a certified green school by the end of the year. And the high school student council is also looking forward to the upcoming holidays. Next week, we have a four-day week, and we are planning on to have a winter fun day on the Friday, or Thursday before break. We're also bringing joy, bringing back joy with a holiday spirit week, especially for mental well-being for high school students. It's nice for them to have fun doing something not educational-based during immense times, intense times due to midterms, finals, or just getting in the needed curriculum before we have our longer winter break. So that would, our spirit week is going to consist of Character Day, where students can embody their favorite character. Tuesday will be Mismatch Day. They can just have fun mismatching their whole outfit. Thursday's going to be Decades Day. That's always fun to have a blast from the past. We have all decades in the 1900s. And then for the last day of the week, which is going to be the Thursday, we have an ugly sweater day, which should be fun. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much.
Cameron, did you say that a couple of students organized a drive with the Salvation Army?
I don't know if I did. There's a lot to say.
You said a lot.
Like regarding the coat drive?
Yeah.
I don't know, but do we have, I believe?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we just brought, this past month, we've been working with the Salvation Army to bring coats and winter clothing for people on the way through the Salvation Army. And we also did a food drive, which was quite nice.
Very good. Thank you. Next, now it's my turn. We'll move on to committees. Audit Committee this month. We reviewed and discussed our October 2018 financial reports submitted by the district treasurer. We also did an overview and received an update on our food service program. As of today, for the month of October, we have served 29,591 breakfasts, 32,103 lunches. I'm really, really proud to share with everyone that that's a 2% increase for the, 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 the each, 2% increase each for the first two months of our program. That's absolutely outstanding, and I'm very, very grateful for all the effort everyone's put forward. We also discussed payments for our site work position of our capital projects that went out in October. We discussed the main building parking lot, fuel tank installation at the bus garage, our outdoor lighting throughout the, throughout the district. We also discussed some ways that we could possibly increase the amount of lunches and possibly breakfasts throughout the middle school. Our next meeting will be January 3rd, 7:45 a.m. All right. I would like to go to this room. We're going to go back to the beginning of our agenda. We're going to start with number two.
I mean, nice if, if.
Do everything first and then do that last.
Do well last.
The executive session?
The reason, I mean, if Mr. Connors is going to join the board, I think that the executive session of important information that he's not aware of.
Absolutely. All right. It's resolved that the Board of Education appoint Jeremy Connors to the Board of Education effective as of 12/11/2018 until 5/21/2019. May I have a motion, please? May I have a second?
Second.
Did you get that, Jimin?
Yes.
Okay. Questions or discussion?
This is not, my vote isn't against Jeremy. I don't believe that the school followed Policy 2310 or 2150 when making this appointment. And there's a committee of three people that met and didn't interview all 10 applicants as required by policy. So, and furthermore, the committee wasn't publicized. It was in the newspaper that it was meeting. So therefore, I plan on voting no, just for those reasons.
Okay. Just so the committee goes, we did not actually have a committee. We had three board members that volunteered to do the interviews. There were 11 applicants. Every application that was sent, or letter of intent, was sent to the district, was sent to every single board member for their review. We were hoping to select a top five. We ended up with seven.
Could you clarify? So each board member was given?
The opportunity to choose their top five candidates. We tallied up the, how the, the voting went. We ended up having ties. So we actually had seven candidates to interview for personal reasons. One could not attend. Another had to cancel at last minute. So we did actually end up interviewing five people. They were absolutely outstanding. Everyone that applied was outstanding. I hope that everyone considers running in the future or contributing to our district in some way or another through volunteer. And it just so happens that the consensus of the three volunteers that interviewed the candidates would like to bring Jeremy Connors forward to the Board of Education.
Can I respond?
At what point are we talking about litigation and not just discussing?
The motion is too old. You talked about the motion.
Okay.
Policy 2150 says that prospective candidates shall be interviewed by at least three members of the Board of Education. After all applicants have had an equal opportunity to be interviewed, the board shall select an applicant. All, you just said yourself, all were not interviewed.
Absolutely. Read the part about all have an opportunity.
Do they have an opportunity?
Absolutely. Every letter, are we crossing the line?
No.
Okay. Every letter of intent was sent to every board member. Every single person that sent in the letter had the opportunity to be interviewed.
So, so can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so if, if we're, like, my job, my business, if I'm hiring someone or if we're hiring teachers, we have to get 100 applicants, right? It's unrealistic to interview 100, right? So, so everyone has the opportunity by, by process. So you, you start looking at the candidates that, all of them that's there. And in this case, the opportunity was given by allowing everybody to see everybody's either resume that they offer, stuff that they offered. And then, just out of course of action, every person was given the opportunity to provide their five top choices. And out of those collective five top choices, the ones that got the most votes are the ones that got the physical interview. So, so the opportunity was given. I think it's unrealistic that if we have 100 people put in documents that we're going to interview 100 people face-to-face. So that's the spirit of the policy, and I think we followed it to its.
I mean, that may be the spirit of the policy, but the plain language says that all shall have an equal opportunity to be interviewed.
Yes, that was given.
And.
It doesn't, I'm sorry.
Processing the application pool into five people isn't part of this policy. It doesn't say the board shall narrow it down to five and then interview whoever they want.
It doesn't have to. It's just give the opportunity.
Okay.
Give the opportunity.
Okay, I respect.
Okay, that's okay. It's okay for you to disagree. It's all right.
That's all right.
Okay, so the motion, question on table.
So is there any other questions or discussions concerning, um, the Jeremy board? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes?
No.
Abstains? This resolution passes.
Who made the motion? Mike?
That's right. Thank you. That's right.
Yeah.
Page, yes? Hi, Jeremy Connors, due to office to our life support constitution in the United States, the Constitution states in here, that I would likely to start to do as a board member from 2018 to 5, 5?
21.
21, 19, according to the best of your ability.
Welcome back. Want you to sit right here in the corner and see? Okay.
No, it was before. I kept it.
All right, are we ready? We have set aside 10 minutes for public comment. If someone from the community would like to come forth to the board, this would be your opportunity. We do have some rules and policies and procedures concerning how public comment is run. And Mr. Marin is going to be kind enough to explain that.
Is anybody coming up to public comment? Tell them just one. I'll skip.
All right.
I don't know until number 12, sorry. It reflects the number 12. Are you going to say it reflects on number 12 also at the end?
At the end, at the end.
There's another public comment.
There's another public comment at the end. That's what.
All right. Moving on to number six, minutes. It's resolved that Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Call motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any question or discussion?
I just have a comment. I stated on 11/13 that I would leave the executive session if there was a motion. There was no motion. So that's all I wanted to add to the comment that I refuse to listen to Mr. Gerhardt's advice. I'm not, I'm not asking for an amendment.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes?
No.
Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSE, and 504 recommendations dated December 12, I'm sorry, December 11th, 2018. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Question or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, retirements, be and are hereby approved. Should I have said modified or?
No, because the agenda was already approved.
All right, so. May I have a motion, please?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Any question or discussion? All in favor? Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes.
I abstained just because I haven't seen the files.
Okay, excellent. It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following miscellaneous resolutions on this consent agenda, use of facilities for Bigman Town Central School District youth basketball teams and memorandum of agreement with the payroll clerk be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion. I'll second.
Who is the motion?
Marson.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved.
Do we have to, 18, 18 is a separate item now, or?
You need to do that now?
Check.
Yeah, because it's personnel, and so we go over to the financial.
Okay, fine. I'll just, I'll do it at the end. Okay. Are you ready, Julie?
Yeah.
It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolution on this agenda, appointments be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please? May I have a second?
I'll second.
Hold on a second. Any question or discussion?
For a point of clarity, I don't know if Mr. Bebe was here and that's a carve-off. You might not know. Are you familiar with what happened? I assume we're talking about 8e on this?
No, no.
8c.
What's that? So, so Ted Parliament was carved off the agenda. And that's what we're voting on now. I just want you to be aware, because I don't know if there's a discussion early.
Good point.
All right.
Is there any questions or discussion?
I'm planning on voting no just for the reasons that I stated in what we're meeting in the executive session, or what you will be meeting in the executive session.
Okay. All right.
I'm also just going to abstain on this one. Just because I'm familiar with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Noes?
No.
Abstains? Resolution passes. All right. It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports, transfers, and grant awards be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please? Was that you, Mark?
Yep, I'll second.
Mark, and then second for Mike?
Yep.
Any question or discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Duckos Bebe?
Yes.
Andrew Brogway?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Jeremy Connors?
Yes.
Michael Haggadorn?
Yes.
Holden Layman?
Yes.
Ed Marin?
Yes.
Mark Zan?
Yes.
Colleen Stone?
All right, so we're off to additional items. Are there any additional items to discuss at this time? You had sent out an email concerning January.
Point person.
Is it 20?
Yeah, that's a, isn't that West Side Mall room?
Yes.
The deadline to let me know if you're going is December 21st. It's just a week. I thought it was January 10th.
So what is it?
That, I think the event is.
process you typically use.
Right, because usually, um, public comment is a comment from the public, it's not a, um, conversation with the public. Um, we are a meeting that's held in the public, but we are not a public meeting.
Okay, so, where do I ask, where, where do I ask this question? Where would I?
Um, I, I would strongly suggest that you, um, go to NISBA, New York State School Boards, and you can research your answers that way. Are you have a question?
NYSSPA.
And YSS what?
BA, New York State School Boards Association.
Okay.
Good. All right, thank you. All right. All right, move to one, two, thirteen, clerk pro temp. It's resolved that the Board of Education appoint... A clerk pro temp. I nominate Ed...
Oh, okay.
...as clerk pro temp for this meeting. Um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, second.
Okay. Mark, second is, I'm sorry, Andy? Any question or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes abstains? Resolution passes. All right. It's resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person and a pending legal matter...
Can I just adjust that? A person or persons, a pending legal matter or matters?
Okay.
Including the matter of...
Okay. Including the matter of the application of Andrew D. Brogway as a member of the Beaton Town Central School District petition for judgment and relief pursuant of CPLR, Article seventy-eight, against the Beaton Town Central School District Board of Education, Daniel Mannix as the superintendent of the Beaton Town Central School District, and Kathy Buckley as the Beaton Town Central School District Board of Education President. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Jeremy? All right, any question or discussion?
Um, are we in, well, first of all, I know that I can't attend part of executive session. Are we inviting anyone in, and am I allowed to participate in this section if we plan on bringing Jake Gervin into executive session?
Um, we will cover what we can, if we can.
Doesn't have any answer.
I don't really have a definite, I can't, I don't have a black and white line for you.
And I think the other...
There comes to time.
I think the other answer to the question is yes, you're intending to invite Andy and Jake Gervin into executive session.
Yes.
So, with that being said, I know that I can't or shouldn't be involved in the legal matter, but I also know that there is an investigation by Mr. Gervin into the conduct of the superintendent that I think that I should be a part of.
We really, really need to be careful of the words we choose at this table.
Let's go back. So, investigation...
Mischaracterization. Yeah, that's, just to be clear, what Mr....
Mischaracterization.
What Mr. Brogway indicated is not, is not an accurate characterization of, of what Mr. Gervin's office has been asked to look at in, in any way, shape, or form. Um, I think perhaps the further dialogue about, I, I would suggest to the board that the entire board go into executive session. When a matter, be it the litigation that Mr. Brogway has initiated against the district or anything else, come to a point where it would be prudent for his attendance to, or anyone else's attendance not to be there, we ask that person to excuse themselves. But at this point, I would suggest the board invite the entire board, myself, Mr. Gervin, into executive session to start the dialogue on the issues you've just raised.
And since I wasn't allowed to participate, um, when Mr. Piscatelli briefed the board on the investigation into my misconduct or alleged misconduct, I don't think it's proper that Mr. Mannix be there when we discuss his conduct.
Again, I, I, I don't, I, I, I think that it would be prudent to pace in the conversation with respect to the matters that are going into executive session, and, and again, I, I would respectfully correct the board member who has spoken, this is not a matter of investigating Mr. Mannix, as was just stated, that's simply inaccurate, so...
I have an email from Ross Piscatelli saying that there is an...
Again, I think, I think we're delving into executive session-privileged conversation at this point.
Do you think, or do you know?
I would highly recommend this conversation ceased, we go into executive session, not further discussion about it.
I move the question, which means I won't vote.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. All right. Okay, I'm a little late. Are you ready, Jimin?
Uh, yeah.
It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolution on this consent agenda, use of facilities for Beaton Town Central School District youth basketball teams and memorandum of agreement with pay, the payroll clerk be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes?
No.
Abstains? Resolution passes. All right. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolution on this consent agenda, use of facilities for Beaton Town Central School District youth basketball teams and memorandum of agreement with pay, the payroll clerk be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeremy? All right, any question or discussion?
Um, are we in, well, first of all, I know that I can't attend part of executive session. Are we inviting anyone in, and am I allowed to participate in this section if we plan on bringing Jake Gervin into executive session?
Um, we will cover what we can, if we can.
Doesn't have any answer.
I don't really have a definite, I can't, I don't have a black and white line for you.
And I think the other...
There comes to time.
I think the other answer to the question is yes, you're intending to invite Andy and Jake Gervin into executive session.
Yes.
So, with that being said, I know that I can't or shouldn't be involved in the legal matter, but I also know that there is an investigation by Mr. Gervin into the conduct of the superintendent that I think that I should be a part of.
We really, really need to be careful of the words we choose at this table.
Let's go back. So, investigation...
Mischaracterization. Yeah, that's, just to be clear, what Mr....
Mischaracterization.
What Mr. Brogway indicated is not, is not an accurate characterization of, of what Mr. Gervin's office has been asked to look at in, in any way, shape, or form. Um, I think perhaps the further dialogue about, I, I would suggest to the board that the entire board go into executive session. When a matter, be it the litigation that Mr. Brogway has initiated against the district or anything else, come to a point where it would be prudent for his attendance to, or anyone else's attendance not to be there, we ask that person to excuse themselves. But at this point, I would suggest the board invite the entire board, myself, Mr. Gervin, into executive session to start the dialogue on the issues you've just raised.
And since I wasn't allowed to participate, um, when Mr. Piscatelli briefed the board on the investigation into my misconduct or alleged misconduct, I don't think it's proper that Mr. Mannix be there when we discuss his conduct.
Again, I, I, I don't, I, I, I think that it would be prudent to pace in the conversation with respect to the matters that are going into executive session, and, and again, I, I would respectfully correct the board member who has spoken, this is not a matter of investigating Mr. Mannix, as was just stated, that's simply inaccurate, so...
I have an email from Ross Piscatelli saying that there is an...
Again, I think, I think we're delving into executive session-privileged conversation at this point.
Do you think, or do you know?
I would highly recommend this conversation ceased, we go into executive session, not further discussion about it.
I move the question, which means I won't vote.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes?
No.
Abstains? Resolution passes. All right. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolution on this consent agenda, use of facilities for Beaton Town Central School District youth basketball teams and memorandum of agreement with pay, the payroll clerk be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Hold on a second. Any question or discussion?
For a point of clarity, I don't know if Mr. Bebe was here and that's carved off. He might not know. Are you familiar with what happened?
Um, I assume we're talking about eight, eight on this?
No, no.
Eight seat.
What's that? So, so Ted Parliament was carved off the agenda, um, and that's what we're voting on now. I just want you to be aware, because I don't know if there's a discussion or anything.
Good point. Is there any questions or discussion?
Um, I'm planning on voting no, just for the reasons that I stated in what we're meeting in executive session, or what you will be meeting in executive session.
Okay.
All right. I'm also just going to abstain on this one, just because I'm not familiar with that.
All right. Okay. All right. All right, move to one, two, thirteen, clerk pro temp. It's resolved that the Board of Education appoint... A clerk pro temp. I nominate Ed...
Oh, okay.
...as clerk pro temp for this meeting. Um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'm sorry, second.
Okay. Mark, second is, I'm sorry, Andy? Any question or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes abstains? Resolution passes. All right. It's resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person and a pending legal matter...
Can I just adjust that? Person or persons, a pending legal matter or matters?
Okay.
Including the matter of...
Okay. Including the matter of the application of Andrew D. Brogway as a member of the Beaton Town Central School District petition for judgment and relief pursuant of CPLR, Article seventy-eight, against the Beaton Town Central School District Board of Education, Daniel Mannix, as the superintendent of the Beaton Town Central School District, and Kathy Buckley as the Beaton Town Central School District Board of Education President. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, Jeremy? All right, any question or discussion?
Um, are we in, well, first of all, I know that I can't attend part of executive session. Are we inviting anyone in, and am I allowed to participate in this section if we plan on bringing Jake Gervin into executive session?
Um, we will cover what we can, if we can.
Doesn't have any answer.
I don't really have a definite, I can't, I don't have a black and white line for you.
And I think the other...
There comes to time.
I think the other answer to the question is yes, you're intending to invite Andy and Jake Gervin into executive session.
Yes.
So, with that being said, I know that I can't or shouldn't be involved in the legal matter, but I also know that there is an investigation by Mr. Gervin into the conduct of the superintendent that I think that I should be a part of.
We really, really need to be careful of the words we choose at this table.
Let's go back. So, investigation...
Mischaracterization. Yeah, that's, just to be clear, what Mr....
Mischaracterization.
What Mr. Brogway indicated is not, is not an accurate characterization of, of what Mr. Gervin's office has been asked to look at in, in any way, shape, or form. Um, I think perhaps the further dialogue about, I, I would suggest to the board that the entire board go into executive session. When a matter, be it the litigation that Mr. Brogway has initiated against the district or anything else, come to a point where it would be prudent for his attendance to, or anyone else's attendance not to be there, we ask that person to excuse themselves. But at this point, I would suggest the board invite the entire board, myself, Mr. Gervin, into executive session to start the dialogue on the issues you've just raised.
And since I wasn't allowed to participate, um, when Mr. Piscatelli briefed the board on the investigation into my misconduct or alleged misconduct, I don't think it's proper that Mr. Mannix be there when we discuss his conduct.
Again, I, I, I don't, I, I, I think that it would be prudent to pace in the conversation with respect to the matters that are going into executive session, and, and again, I, I would respectfully correct the board member who has spoken, this is not a matter of investigating Mr. Mannix, as was just stated, that's simply inaccurate, so...
I have an email from Ross Piscatelli saying that there is an...
Again, I think, I think we're delving into executive session-privileged conversation at this point.
Do you think, or do you know?
I would highly recommend this conversation ceased, we go into executive session, not further discussion about it.
I move the question, which means I won't vote.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. All right. Okay, I'm a little late. Are you ready, Jimin?
Uh, yeah. Okay.
It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolution on this consent agenda, use of facilities for Beaton Town Central School District youth basketball teams and memorandum of agreement with pay, the payroll clerk be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Okay, I'm a little late. Are you ready, Jimin?
Uh, yeah. Okay.
It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolution on this consent agenda, use of facilities for Beaton Town Central School District youth basketball teams and memorandum of agreement with pay, the payroll clerk be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Okay. 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 All right. 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 All right.[1619.29]